This is the 2021 Ward 1 City Council Debate. I am Tony Shanella, the editor of Concord, New Hampshire Patch. Thank you for being with us. This debate series has been sponsored by Patch as well as Concord Community TV, Concord TV, as well as WKXL 1450 and 103.9 FM. If you miss anything during the debate, you can check back with the website at yourconcordtv.org or the Concord, New Hampshire Patch Voters Guide online, as well as YouTube where the videos are being posted. The rules for the debate are each candidate will get a 10-minute opening statement and closing statement, and then I will ask questions in between while technically it's being called a debate. It's more of a conversation, but everyone is getting the chance to answer the questions. Tonight, let me introduce one of the two candidates running in Ward 1. Brent Todd is the incumbent from Ward 1. He is being challenged on the ballot by William Barton. Despite chances and time spent trying to get William to agree to a debate, he was unable to agree to participate. In fairness to the incumbent, we are giving him some of the same questions that we gave all of the other candidates and allowing him the opportunity to have opening and closing statements and answer some of the questions that are pertinent to being a city councillor. Again, William Barton was invited repeatedly to participate and chose not to. So Brent is debating the empty chair. Brent, you have two minutes for an opening statement.
Well, thank you, Tony. My thanks to you and to the Patch and Concord TV and WKXL for making this event possible. It's really important to get the information out to the voters. I've been very privileged and honored to be the Ward 1 City Councillor since 2014. And since that time, I've been listening to folks, learning, and putting together a list of priorities to work on. And we've been having a lot of success. So Merchant's Way is one big thing that's happening, as we all know, that's the Exit 17 and Whitney Road shops. It includes the Market Basket that's being built right now, and it's still set to open next year, along with the New Hampshire Liquor Store. So there will be other shops and restaurants as well added to this development. But folks have been wanting specifically a supermarket in Pennetook forever. And so I've been very glad to have been able to help make that happen. With this development, we're also going to be adding jobs, but we're also going to be adding an estimated $40 million in city assessment, which could add over $1 million in tax revenue. And that's the equivalent of about 10% of the total Pennetook tax base. Pennetook would actually need to add about $100 million in new assessed value, which is over 25% of what it has now, in order to make the Concord and Pennetook tax rates equal because of the higher Merrimack Valley School District rate. So we're actually on our way toward that with this project. And then this project can also lead to further development with the extension of Whitney Road to the Concord Monitor, and there's 100 acres there for sale plus their building. So this, I view, is sort of fiscal responsibility. It's long-term, long-range planning, and that's actually, I think, a crucial part of keeping tax rates low. So since I've been serving as Ward 1 councillor, the city has spent $20 million actually on municipal and special projects. That's above and beyond the costs that you pay in your taxes just for the regular services of police, fire, and general services. And a lot of those improvements include work on roads, and I'm happy to report that next year, Pennetook has about 20 streets that will be reworked. So that's good news. And last but not least, I'm actually also glad to have been able to support the affordable market rate housing options in Pennetook. I'm sure folks have read about Earl Couch, 74 years old, a veteran who was evicted from his apartment on Washington Street, and he was looking for another place and he couldn't find one. He had to eventually go to Manchester to find a place. Luckily, he did find something. But that's what I keep telling folks. These are your neighbors. These are the people who are already living here who need these affordable housing options. What's great about what's currently being built in Pennetook is that the catch housing project that's going in on Village Street, Rosemary's Way, is going to be 25% market rate. 11 of the 42 apartments there are going to be market rate. So that creates a good mix, and we need to keep up with that because, as we know, the recent census data have showed Pennetook Ward 1 increase in residents. So very glad to talk about these issues or anything else that you have questions on.
Thank you, Brent. Let's talk first off about substance abuse, mental health, and the homelessness issue. Those are probably one of the big, they're kind of combined, they're subsets of each other, but they really are on the minds of a lot of voters. I've said this to all of the candidates in similar ways, but in fairness to city councillors and the mayor, who are essentially volunteers, you get a stipend, there isn't a ton of things that you can do to fix those problems. But what you can be is a go-between between city and state agencies and the people who need services and kind of like as the out-front person. At the same time, the public thinks that you can just wave a magic wand and fix these things, or you're not doing enough, or you're harming the homeless when you protect private property rights by taking campers off land where they shouldn't be and they're trespassing. How, what more can you do, if you can, and what should it be? And if not, why?
I think that we can do a lot more, and we will continue to do that. We're in progress and in process of doing that because we're looking at serious zoning changes and redoing our zoning, which needs to be done. It's outdated and it needs to be looked at again. After that will come the master plan. So those are all big projects coming in the future, and what we can do is start to take a look at specifically the current zoning and see if we can apply rules to allow for more cluster development and more density in the zoning. That's really going to be the key. You know, if we look at specifically, let's say, at Pennetook, Pennetook has, you know, 14 to 15% of the total population now, I'd say, of the city, but it has only 77% of the affordable housing. And by doing something about the affordable housing, that's really doing something about the homeless problem as well. So you start at the top. You look at the zoning, and then you can go from there to create those opportunities to create additional housing in Concord, some of that hopefully affordable. And then that will in turn, I think, also help the homelessness problem, but also looking to what kind of housing options can be made and provided for the homeless as well. And I think the city can continue to be active in that. And again, it's going to be a top-down approach, I think, but that's really where the council can step in and do some good work.
I know that the first round, I would agree with you on the zoning and the density. I know that the first round, there were some really wackadoodle proposals about use of some of the existing lots. And so it's good to see them kind of go, wait a minute, that may not be the way we want to go. We actually want to have more density inside of the smaller lots. And I think especially with in-laws and moving and people, children staying longer, you know, you're right. The, I want to switch to the budget for a second. You have spent, the city council has spent a lot of time trying to keep the budget within 3% each year. It gets lower, it gets up there close, but you know, that has always been kind of a baseline. And for, I believe it's at least 10 years now, it's been right around that, irrelevant of whether there's a recession or anything else that goes on. This year, the budget was around $109 million, both in operating and capital. If you're re-elected, what, if any, concerns do you have with the current budget and future budgets going forward?
Well, the, to balance the New Hampshire budget, within the past 12 years, lawmakers have eliminated agreements that for decades have actually helped residents in Concord and other municipalities in New Hampshire provide the services that they provide to residents. So this is the downshifting that we talk about. And this includes several things. It includes the state sharing of business tax revenues, eliminating the state share of retirement contributions for teachers, police, and firefighters, and then the state not sharing 40% of the meals and rooms tax that's been collected. Now, I know that on that one, we're going to get some temporary relief, but in the out-years, that's going to drop down to 30%. So Concord would be able to actually repeat a 0% tax increase that we did for fiscal year 2021 if any of those items that I just mentioned could be resolved permanently. So we have to continue to kind of keep an eye out on what's happening at the state level, and it really becomes then a balancing act, basically. We don't, you know, again, from the city's point of view, from the city portion, we've, as you pointed out, had very low tax increases. But we also have lots of challenges in the city, too. We have, you know, more than any other municipality in New Hampshire, we have 25% of our property is tax-exempt. So it's either state-owned or nonprofits. And so that's a big challenge right off the bat. So, you know, I think, though, that continuing focus on that, continuing focus as we have, I think, been doing to try to provide the best value for the services that we know that folks want in the community. And then, you know, we really went through this last budget, I know, with a fine-toothed comb, and the city staff really did an excellent job. And I think that we couldn't find anything, really. We really couldn't find any room. Because remember that the large majority of the budget goes, you know, 62%, 3% goes just to police and fire. And then you've got an additional percentage that goes to general services, and after that, you've got about 18% that pays the debt service on our bonds. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room. But I think that those are the, the general concerns is always kind of keeping an eye on what's happening at the state level and then trying to react to it as best we can.
And during the last 18 months or so, there's been a lot of discussion about defunding or disbanding the police department. About 93% of the $15 million budget that is spent by the police department each year goes to personnel, meaning any defunding or transfer of funds for anything else would reduce the number of officers in the field or staff. Where do you come down on this?
Well, I think we are going to continue to examine what are the best practices of, as to law enforcement in the city of Concord. But frankly, in my ward, I've heard just the opposite of defund. I've heard that folks want more patrols. They want more police out on the streets. You know, they would like to see the old foot patrols come back. So there is definitely, I think, a need for additional officers. We have the same officers, a number of officers that we had since decades ago, and yet the calls and the demand for services is much higher than it used to be. So folks generally, as I say, they want the opposite of defund, except that they are interested in somehow providing, looking at closely at the issue of mental health and being able to provide funds to that, which we do. But you know, generally with police, we don't, we, there's a serious training program that goes on with police. We don't, you couldn't just be a, let's say, a night security guard yesterday, come and apply, and they're going to give you your badge, and tomorrow you're out on the street doing a patrol. So that's a good thing. And second, there is a partnership that we have currently with Riverbend where police and Riverbend personnel actually go out on patrols together. So I think that's helping. So I think we can look to augment those services to help the mental health challenge part of it. But I'm really looking forward to focusing on all this in next year's budget if I'm re-elected. We also need to actually focus on the fire department because I've seen an increase of 3,000 calls in, over the years recently, and so that's a huge demand as well. So this is something that does need a lot of focus. It's a good question. Thank you.
On body camps for our police officers, real quick, yes or no?
Yes, I think so. We just have to, you know, determine how you can fit that into the budget.
Right, and how you can pay for it.
Right.
Let's shift back to housing for just a second. The housing issue's been just like a perfect storm in many ways. You have more people being relocated or moving into the city. You have a historic low vacancy rate. Most of the housing that's been built, with the exception of a couple of projects, like you said, the, has been high-end and single-family. The city has focused a lot of energy on bringing market rate housing to downtown to continue to create vibrancy there. At the same time, a lot of people are saying that there aren't really enough affordable units throughout the city. What specifically beyond zoning, which you kind of thoroughly answered, should the city be doing about housing specifically, either affordable or market rate on that level?
Well, you know, I think that, I'm actually proud of the progress that Pennetook has made on this issue, and you just mentioned it, that we had, you know, as we discussed earlier, the catch project, and there's also Pennetook Landing and so forth. But you know, we can also look at this as a different way and perhaps to think about it. So just under 50% of the land in Concord is undeveloped. And of the 50% of land that is developed, the highest land use is single-family homes. That's 25%. So one quarter of all the land in Concord, and we have the largest square miles of any community in New Hampshire, 64 square miles, where we are the most spread-out community. But 25% of that is single-family homes. The next largest land use is actually roads at 6% because we have 220 miles of roads because we're so spread out. And multifamily housing is only 2.5% with about 50 apartment complexes in the city. So if you roll all that together, we've got single-family homes taking up the most land in Concord, and we've got multifamily at only 2.5% of all the land use in Concord. Rents are rising 20% over the last five years in Concord, and only about 5.5% of the rentals are actually, that we have now, are actually affordable.
And if you go back even further, if you go back 20 years, it's like tripled.
Yes.
You used to be able to get a two-bedroom, you know, for about $600 or $800, and now you're looking at 21 and, you know, on a high end, and 18 on a low end.
It doesn't paint a pretty picture.
Right, no.
No, that's right. And so we're going to need to continue to focus, as I, that's why I brought up the zoning and the changes, because I really think that ultimately that's the best place where we can, we can start to provide a lot of focus and, you know, continue to work from there after we've got those new zoning rules in place and see what. And we're going to be thinking about that in terms of being able to entice this kind of development as well, the affordable housing, all the different types of housing that we want. But certainly in terms of a land use perspective, that's why I brought this up, it's something that we will also be looking at and thinking about. How do we, how do we best use our land going forward?
Especially, and there are limited lots as well.
Right.
You know, the city has put a lot of stuff in conservation easement. Even with some of the larger farms, you can't develop, you can't buy the farm for $1 million to develop it on, some of the properties are already set aside, which is always the plan, you know?
Right.
You sell five units to be able to buy the deal in the first place, and there's, all those are being closed, too. So it's very, very complicated. Let me ask you real quick. So during, at least, there were a number of, actually, Black Lives Matter activists, a few, who raised concerns about what they called, and I'm using the politically correct term, what they believe is that housing is segregated in the city in certain neighborhoods. And they use a word I won't use. But the sentiment of some people is that there are certain ethnicities and races are kind of shoved into certain areas of the city. What can be done to change this sentiment? And what can you do as a councillor beyond like building, apartment buildings on Auburn Street, you know, to be able to change that kind of thinking and/or have some of the neighborhoods be a little bit more diverse than they are?
Well, in terms of the, so the zoning, we go back to the zoning again, because if you examine the zoning and those wards that, let's say, have 0% of the affordable housing right now, there might be opportunities there to be able to create some of that so that you'd be able to spread that out a little bit more through the city. So that's something, that's a way that the city can actively or proactively make changes in that regard. But the city really hasn't, other than that, the city hasn't really created the situation where we might have a specific population that is in one particular area. As I mentioned, you know, Pennetook really only has about 7% of the affordable housing, but the Heights has 45%, and Downtown has 42%. And that's about, there's about 1,200 units, affordable housing, give or take. So naturally, folks are going to move where the rents are lower and where apartments are available. So this was really an issue of the market rather than anything else. But the city can be more proactively involved in terms of the zoning piece to be able to encourage development or be able to make it allowable in other areas as well. But, you know, I would say that if anything, the city has worked in the opposite way of what you were sort of expressing that that sentiment was, because we put what we call the citywide community center right up on the heights. And so, you know, at the old dame school. And so, you know, that was a huge project, 30,000 square feet. It's state-of-the-art, it has a library there, and folks within the community, the surrounding community, can walk there and use those services, connected to the park, each park. And so I personally, I've always supported continuing Concord as a welcoming community, and I encourage and support a diverse and inclusive community. I think that's the way Concord wins all around.
You are watching the 2021 Ward 1 Debate. I'm Tony Shanella. Brent, do your kids attend the Merrimack Valley School District, or are you in the Concord School District?
No, I'm actually, my property's actually in the Concord School District.
Okay. Some Merrimack Valley School District parents have raised concerns about lack of representation on the city council of that even though you're the Ward 1 City Councillor, neither you nor any of your colleagues have children in the Merrimack Valley School District. And yet, you all recently voted for tax increment financing for the Exit 17 project that will raise their education taxes, which have gone down a little bit this last year, but the year before were abnormally high. I believe it was around $8 more per thousand compared to the rest of the city. While you've been a cheerleader of the plan, and I think it's a great plan, too, that's nothing, that's not a derogatory term, that's a positive term. Shouldn't you, should you or should you not have listened to some of the Merrimack Valley parents a little bit harder about how concerned they were about their education taxes? Or shouldn't that project have been bonded so that everyone who benefits from the project when the debt service is paid off with the higher property taxes participated in footing the bill?
Well, if we had have done it without funding the road improvement project, which was a requirement of being able to do the development, through a mechanism other than the TIF district, that would have required an increase in taxes. Starting in fiscal year 2023, it would have been about a 1% increase. And going forward, you know, we don't, we're not sure. And so I think just from a fiscal responsibility or even a, you know, I like to see myself mostly conservative fiscally, that's really not a great thing to do because in the year, fiscal year 2023, 2024, we don't know what other challenges we're going to face. And if we're already sided with a 1% tax increase, if that's already on our backs, that could really be proved to be very challenging. And it could bump up against what you mentioned, which earlier, which is what we've been priding ourselves on, doing a balanced budget and also keeping those percentages very low. But really, you know, the TIF district concept, you know, the way I look at it is, if you want to go on vacation and you set aside some money for your vacation trip, right? Because you say, next summer I want to take a vacation, we're going to put this bunch of money aside for the vacation. And then a couple of months go by and you say, you know, I really want a new sofa and I could use a new microwave. I'm just going to take the money out of this vacation fund and go and buy. Well, you've just put your vacation in jeopardy, right? You may have a limited, or you may have to cancel it altogether because the money's got to go back in there somehow. It's no different than the TIF district. So the request, we're not, we're not, the city is not, by the mechanism that we're using the TIF, taking money away from the school district.
Let me just interrupt you for one second.
Yep.
You, what the TIF does by setting aside revenue from a certain body is that it passes on those funds that would have normally gone to the school district onto all of the other taxpayers. I mean, it's the same thing with everybody downtown. The Sears block didn't just miraculously appear. All of that revenue put towards the Sears block project was made up by everybody else over many, many years. So that's, that's why, that's how it raises everybody else's taxes.
But the concept, though, is that in order to make a development happen, a lot of times, you use the TIF. The TIF district is really one of the tools that you use. And, you know, as we, as I think everyone knows, Concord doesn't have control over the Merrimack Valley School District budget. And all those things that I mentioned to you earlier that were challenges for the city, when you asked me that question about, you know, what are we concerned about in the city budget, the downshifting of state costs, that's really where the problem is for the Merrimack Valley School Districts as well. And I think that they do recognize that. So, you know, I think that, again, if you, if you're looking at, the fact is that if we were to do what I said earlier, you take your vacation money out to buy that microwave, or you take the money out of the TIF district and you give it in advance to the Merrimack Valley School District, that means that the bond is going to take longer to pay off, which means that in the long run, taxpayers are going to pay more for that new roundabout project that's going in, for the road repairs. And so really, in terms of being fiscally responsible, I don't think that, that doesn't sound like it's good to me. You know, if you have a choice between taking a 15-year mortgage and a 30-year mortgage, you're going to take the 15 because you know that the 30-year mortgage is going to mean that your property's going to cost you more in the long run. And the same thing would happen if we removed funds in advance early from the TIF district. In the end, taxpayers might think that they're saving money or that they're helping out the school district, but there's no guarantees there. Also, there's no real guarantees that the school district will use those dollars that the city might give them to in fact lower the tax rate.
Let me move on to a couple of political reform questions, and then we're going to let you have a closing statement because we're running up against the clock. And I thank you for being here. We are an unusual community in Concord in that we have 85% of the population is represented by one school district, 15% is represented by another, and we have a strong city manager system and, you know, volunteer city council. There are very few communities, there are no communities in the state that have autocratic, sorry, autonomous school boards that make their own budgets, and very few places in the country like this. So with that in mind, let me ask a couple of quick thoughts about potential reforms. Should we, should the city change from a strong city manager system to a strong mayor system with maybe an administrator? And if not, why?
I think that the current system that we have seems to have worked very well for the city. I think that, you know, in fact, we, there have been some, you know, back in the '60s, I think there was a real serious problem with, you know, a certain mayor who was, you know, kind of indicted.
Sent the police after somebody.
Yes, right. So, you know, there are dangers of that. I think also, when you, when you look at the way the city functions now, we have a real direct kind of organizational chart. It's the, it's the public at large, and then it's the city council, and then below that is the city manager and the rest of the city staff. And if you start to want to change that, you end up with a situation where you could have party influence, for example, and then you've got another entity coming into the mix. I think it's really much more efficient this way. We can do what we think is right regardless of what our party, political party, might think we should, we're supposed to do, and what we might be beholden to do as a result of being part of a political party. So that's really, I think, one of the main benefits of the way we have it set up now.
Should the city council have oversight over the SEIU-8 budget?
Over the, oh, excuse me.
Over the Concord School District budget?
School District budget. The, I, we've asked that question of residents at the polls before, and they've rejected it. So I think that there's value in having the entities remain separate. I think we can entrust the work of running the school district to those who are best suited for the role, who are the experts and those folks working in the school district.
Carissa Coro, I believe is her name, she's the owner of Educating for Good, and she recently made a, I think is a quite compelling case, that the Merrimack Valley School District should be merged with the Concord School District. And she didn't mention this, but one of the problems that it could solve would be, in fact, the property tax bill would probably be lowered in Pennetook than it is now, but it also would allow for a runlet middle school project to be, renovate the runlet middle school and not buy, you know, not spend a $68 to $80 million new school, which, that was pre-inflation price on that as well, because they have a high school and middle school in Pennetook, and some of the, some of the people in the northern part of the city could be shifted. Do you have any thoughts about that and specifically whether you, as a city councillor, should be, should get involved in that? It seems like it, it seems like it solves a lot of problems.
Well, I would certainly want to get involved with it if there's feeling of folks in Pennetook that they want to make a change. But what I've heard a lot of is actually that there's a strong sentiment in Pennetook that they like the school district, that they feel their kids get a good education there, that the district is overall doing a very good job. And if that wasn't the case, I would say that the real estate market in Pennetook wouldn't be as high as it is, and we wouldn't have seen a population rise in Pennetook. So I would, I'd want to see how folks in Pennetook felt about that concept first, and that's usually the way I try to generally run and govern as Ward 1 councillor. And then I would also just point out that what folks need to keep in mind is the overall potential costs of things. So you mentioned the runlet middle school, that's fine, but you know, there would also be, I think, costs to, you know, how would, how would the city of Concord take over the campus? Would it be purchased? Would it be, you know, there are a lot of mechanics that would have to be involved, and there may be some costs involved in that. And then if it turns out that most of the students would want to have, that are currently at Merrimack Valley, would want to have an agreement with Concord, well, then you wouldn't really be moving a big school student population off of that campus. It would still be operating, except within, so then you wouldn't necessarily have the space to put those students that would have gone to the new runlet.
So there's been a number of discussions in some of the other communities that they don't want to pay the higher property tax rate either in Pennetook. I know that there's been rabid parents in Webster and Salisbury. They could easily merge with Franklin. Loudon, Loudon parents could merge with Pittsfield. It would solve a lot of problems, which would free up, you know, they would have the ability, they could send their kids to the Heights, to Merrimack Valley High School, or they could join in regional. I mean, there's going to be more regionalization just because of the way the birth rates are and enrollments are.
Yeah.
I'm kind of thinking, why not do it now, you know?
Well, I think also that the other thing is, well, but you do also want to, you do want to think about the future because I think the second point I'd make is that New Hampshire with a population of about 1.4 million has more school districts than Florida, which has 20 million residents. So then folks wonder, why are my taxes so high? Well, because you're supporting all of these school districts. It's the same thing with all the municipalities that have their own police and fire and so forth. And I think the wave of the future is consolidation. So really, if you look at the Merrimack Valley School District approach, that's really the, where the future is going to look, I think, for a lot of communities, not just with their schools, but with other services as well.
Maryland's the same way. They have, they have a school district in each county.
Right.
And then we have nine, and they have 24 counties. They have 90. You know, we've never, we would never compare ourselves to Maryland. You know, they're in the middle, and we're always in the top five, but, you know, there is there.
Right.
We are out of time, Brent. I really appreciate your time. We're going to give you two minutes for a closing statement to tell voters why they should re-elect you.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, you know, my thanks to you, The Patch, Concord TV, and WKXL, and special thanks and gratitude to the voters of Ward One. So I'm really proud to say that as we look at all the issues and some of the issues that we've discussed here tonight, facing the city as a whole, Pennecook has actually emerged as a leader. We have adding economic development and adding tax revenue, adding housing options, adding jobs. And I'll also say as an aside, we have affordable childcare at the Pennecook Community Center. So I'm running again to continue the good work that our city council has done and keep the momentum going in Pennecook. And we have other needs that we'll want to focus on also going forward, on our parks. I was very glad to assist with the revitalization of Riverside Park. The city council's added dollars in this year's budget for a new waterfront park at the Pennecook Landing site.